Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Tuesday evening, January 22nd Selectmen's meeting for Stanford Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the name of God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Couple announcements. We'd like to have a moment of silence for Betty Dean, passed away last Friday. She's a longtime member of the Board of Registers, wife of late John Dean, and mother of Selectman Jennifer Dean-Wing. Sympathies is extended to the family. Could have a moment of silence. Stand, please. Okay, we're gonna table the approval of the minutes until our next meeting, which is February 4th at 7:00 PM. We brought a town officials, MES Playground Committee, to speak. You could sit there, just say your name and...
My name is Shari Forget.
And I'm Valerie Hagerty.
And we are here representing the Noble Elementary School Playground Committee. We're a group of probably about seven or eight parents. And we're here tonight to speak to you about the location that we're proposing to put in a playground for the children. We had done some research and found that we're really the only public elementary school within a 15 to 20 mile radius where the children don't have access to a playground. So we really felt that that's something we'd like to do for the children, especially considering what research has shown as far as childhood obesity, attention issues with children, play time and physical activity can really help with those issues for children. So we feel it's important to have a playground for them. We looked at a few locations at the school for the possibility of this playground. One was behind the school where there is a hardtop area, and we looked into possibly breaking some of that up and going into the woods a bit, but the fire department had told us that that area would not work because they would not be able to easily drive around the building and fit the truck all the way around to turn. We also looked at areas perhaps near the athletic fields and ran into some issues there with sewer lines, drainage, those types of issues where it would interfere with that. So our new location that we would like to seek your approval for is located right in front of the auditorium, so basically between the parking lot and the auditorium entrance. We have some photos to show you. There's two photos if you each would like to take one to look at.
Is that the big rock?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there is a big rock.
I just trying to focus.
Yep, very big rock, lot of ledge there.
Yeah.
There's two different photos coming around, yep. This is the area that we really feel would be ideal for a few reasons. This area tends to be an area that can be a bit dangerous because of all of the rocks and ledge that's there, so part of the plan would include having that removed, so that would no longer be an unsafe area. It also would be an ideal location for the children as far as access to getting into the school easily, say if they needed to go to the nurse, if they needed to be dismissed early and had to be led into the front of the building. The children would get to the playground from the cafeteria, which would be on the right side of the school in the rear. Part of our plan includes putting in a sidewalk for them to walk on, and the sidewalk ultimately ends up connecting right to the walkway that leads you into the school building. So we'd have a safe area for the children to walk on to get to the playground. They wouldn't have to cross over the driveway at all to reach the parking lot, I mean the playground, excuse me. So that's another reason we felt this would be a good location for them. We are planning to have the entire area fenced in. There would be two gates, you know, typical sized gates, and then we would have another gate that a truck could get in to if need be, in case an ambulance would need to get in that area or anything like that.
Put the parking lot access.
Yes. We also felt this location too, it keeps any interference with classroom instruction from happening. The children don't have to walk past any classrooms to get to this area, so they wouldn't have to distract anyone who's still learning if it's not their recess time. Also, we thought, community wise too, a lot of events go on in those athletic fields, especially in the spring, that would be a nice playground even for the community to have access to when their children are playing baseball on the fields or softball. It doesn't interfere with any of the electrical lines or sewage lines or drainage lines either. Just wanna make sure I covered all the points. I think so. So for those reasons, we felt this is a very good location. We would also maintain distance between the auditorium doors and where the playground actually begins, so that way if we needed to evacuate the auditorium for an emergency, you would not have to go through the playground to exit. There'd be, the sidewalk would go right there and then the playground would begin, so there'd be easy access to emergency exits if need be. Now, the area, the playground proposals that we, we've had two proposals given to us by a couple of companies that we're looking at right now. What we're looking at is a 54 by 108 area here in this section. 50 by 80 of that would be the actual playground area.
We'll have the structure where the rest of the part of the playground would be open. It would still have a poured surface, which we were planning to do for the whole entire playground, but the other area will be for free play for kids to be able to, they don't have to go on the structure, they'll have more room to do some running around. There is one section that they can throw balls up into one of the things, the balls will come down, they'll have room to spread out.
We're thinking of having maybe some benches there if the kids wanted to just rest or relax too. Have hot scotch perhaps put into the poured surface, that's one of the options that we've gotten from the company, so that they'd have, so we don't want the entire area to be covered by structure, there'll be some open area. That's why we're asking to use the whole 54 by 108 area, even though the actual play structure only takes 50 by 80. I believe that is everything. So we're looking basically for your approval to use this area so that we could move forward and finalize proposals. We have had someone come and look at this area to give us an estimate of about how much it would cost to prepare it for a playground surface to be poured, so meaning to get all that ledge and rock out of there, level it for us. That would be the first step, that's what we need to do first, and then we would work toward putting in the poured surface, getting the fencing, and then the actual playground structure. So we, in order to get moving with our fundraising efforts, we are seeking your approval to use this location and be able to start raising some funds to begin.
Well, I have a couple of concerns. When you send these proposals out, do you have a spec sheet so everybody has the same scenario with how you wanna lay this out, so it's not...
We do have the actual plans from the companies.
Like for instance, you said you want the fence in there?
Yes.
How high is the fence gonna be?
With that, we do have someone on our committee who is looking into what the regulations are with that, how high does it need to be, what type of fence does it need to be?
Because I do have reservations about that for the safety of the children.
Yes.
Number two, you have a fence and I know the location, and people drive their cars near there, it wouldn't take much for a car to run right up that driveway and right into that fence and right through that fence. Are you gonna put cement barriers or something to make it even safer? Because the fence doesn't give, the fence makes it safe for the children, so people can't go in there that are not allowed in there, but it does not make it safe for a car to run that fence over. I still feel there's a question about the safety of the children with the parking lot right next door.
Okay.
So like cement post structures up some high?
Jersey barriers, something, something to at least...
Maybe something a little bit more...
Like some kind of guardrail, like...
Guardrail, something.
Yes.
Like Blackstone Elementary, you know?
That's right, they have the guardrails running all along, yep.
Godrail going all the way, I think it's wood.
Are you looking for just in front, or are you looking also on the side for the road that goes around the building?
Well, I know the parking lot, I know what goes around, so I mean, I would suggest, I would suggest you, first priority is protect the children, you gotta do it 100%, you can't do 50%.
Well, okay, but the side that's going into, walking into the school with that sidewalk, are we gonna have to do some type of area?
That would be, no, because they're not driving over there, they're driving right here on the side and in the back, that's where my main concern would be.
I would say like right along with the side.
Right.
So if someone came out of the parking area about to turn and lost control?
There's a reason...
That's a good point, John.
Yeah, because the reason why I'm saying this, the sidewalks have, it looks like a three inch lip, cargo right over that, no problem, wouldn't even hesitate, boom boom boom, and it's in the fence, the fence is down, I got concerns.
Happens at WalMarts, CVS.
I have concerns, get some granny or some grandpa, you know, and something happens or whatever.
Oh, John. It could be anyone.
You're in that category now, John.
I know, thank you.
It could be any ringer, with a latched mother, any icing can do that.
That would be my concern.
So right around to the corner as well.
Right.
The other thing...
You might wanna, well, go ahead, John.
I'm sorry, John. The other thing I would consider in your proposals is maybe have a couple of lights put on the school, because sometimes in the evening, they, you know, because daylight savings time and this and that, and the kids and this and that, they might have a, they wanna have a little party or an event or something like that in the playground for the kids and this and that. I'm just thinking, and the wall is right there, and you could put lights, it'll light the place up, and plus good for safety too.
And just for, even would help police to keep an eye on it if they're patrolling.
Security.
Yep.
Right, so maybe that would be something that you could...
You'd be my secretary?
Yes.
You could down some wire.
It's good to have another set of eyes look.
With the guardrails, one of the safeties and issues that we were coming up with, with people had proposed already while we were hashing this out, was that they wanted a gate big enough in order to get like an ambulance in there if necessary. With the guardrails to the, in front and to the right, are we suggesting maybe to have that gate on the left-hand side and have them come up through the walkway?
Yeah, that would be...
From the main entrance into the school, I think there's probably enough...
Because it is a ramp, it is ramped, right, going up, so they could access it.
I would suggest, once approved, maybe to get with the police chief to see what his opinions are. I mean, I pers, this is just me, and I understand the guardrail premise, but I hate to see a guardrail up. And I would like to see safety, you know, whether it's the poles, do you know what I mean, that can be maybe painted and decorated, you know, will that stop a car? I mean, that's what they have in a lot of places. I just don't know, you know, you want it to look inviting, you want it to be safe, so I don't know what kind of safety barrier you can put up that doesn't, you know...
It's not an eyesore, I understand what you're saying, but like you said, they could put some barriers up and this and that, maybe put a couple of shrubs in the front of it, so, and like you said, Jennifer, they could paint it so it looks kinda blends in, it makes it look a color.
But there may be other, yeah.
You could put the barriers like every four feet though, that'd be ugly, if you put barriers every four feet.
Well, in Boston, in front of one of the buildings, they put a, it looks like a broken-up ship, or new, they have it going out, and we have like a two-foot area in between, and that's what they used in front of the building as a stopper.
All I'm saying is I think there's gotta be more than just a fence.
No, I agree.
I don't feel comfortable in this location with just a fence, that's what I'm saying.
And you might wanna find out, the fire department may say they don't need access, you're gonna want access in there because you're gonna be dumping, or you won't be dumping mulch.
Right, to pour the surface, you're right.
Yeah.
They're gonna require at least a four-foot wide fence, a gate.
Yeah.
But that might be enough, that is enough for them to bring in what they need. I don't think they're gonna wanna bring their ambulance in, if they're sand and everything, they'll just, they just need a good access now, handicap access, at least have a four-foot wide.
I would, once approved, I would check with the police to work with, I know he's talking...
To get more specific.
Exactly what would it look like, maybe there's a fence company that provides a type of fence that might go along that side, you know, I don't know, I'm kinda, it's not my field and I don't pretend that it is, but you know, someone with more knowledge might say, we have this great fence that acts as a protection, and it looks good, and it's appropriate, and you know, those are things that you may wanna look into.
Also, you might wanna look into putting the, you know, you said you're gonna put a fence across in front of those doors, along that sidewalk?
Yes.
That might also be some kind of restriction for the fire department to be able to get in those doors if they had to, if there's a fence across.
You're right. So they might require a certain number of feet clearance, or say not, you can't put one on that side, so we'll have to...
So if you, you might want, the chief, it's the same chief, police chief and fire chief is the same guy?
We'll have to have a certain radius for like wheelchair accessibility, so this goes into that ADA.
Because you don't wanna crowd fence there and corral everybody that's trying to get out.
Right.
Actually, you don't want...
I don't think, is there any...
It looks like there's one.
There isn't now.
We will, one will be created, so we'll have to...
It might be that we have to, it looks like there's a concrete pad here, maybe that's already to their requirements that they might need, which is what we will probably extend.
I was speaking to one of your members today when I was picking up my daughter, so he was showing me everything.
Do they have to get an approval from the school committee also?
That was my next question.
Yeah, that was our next step.
We were coming first to you to see whether or not this is a feasible location for us to actually even to then go on to the next step, which we go with the school committee.
I just had a couple of questions. Obviously, it's gonna be handicapped accessible if you're doing the port area. Our police department currently have cameras up at the school?
Yes.
I don't know if that's something within your fundraising efforts to get another camera and maybe hook in?
I do believe this is actually three, I think there's definitely two cameras in the front already.
So they, you may not even need to do that.
Right, we might need to, there might be a camera that needs to be shown directly onto it, but it might not be necessary, but we can check with the chief.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if you're doing fundraising efforts and then you can tide in and whatever. Also, the, I know one of the issues before, because there was some talk years ago about playgrounds, and one of the concerns was the maintenance of it after you put it in.
Yes.
So is that something you have, okay?
I did, I had to not even say it, I'm like, oh, yes, I forgot to say that.
That's okay.
That is part of what we're planning with the fundraising, we want to raise enough funds to actually put it in, and then also to create a fund for maintenance afterwards, an upkeep of the location. So that is part of our plan.
Now, is that something that's going to be done through, like, yeah, it gets built, your group is seven, eight, and then it goes five and four, and then your kids move out of the school, and then that disbands. Is this money that's gonna be put like within Mespa, is it put within the school budget? Because we have a poxum recreation, is that something to make a line item specific, and then our poxum recreation, I don't know.
Our chairman was saying endowment, I'm not quite sure how the full endowment works, but we hopefully have enough money and it would be run by Mespa.
Through the parents group?
Yes, through the parents group.
All right, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure.
And it's not gonna be any cost to the taxpayers?
No.
Not that we can perceive, do you see, we want it to be fully with funds and grants that we raise, do you see anything that we're not thinking of that might be a concern?
I think at this point with the town finances, I think the only thing we can tell you is it needs to be fully funded through your efforts, and that the town does not have any money, unfortunately, to contribute to this. You know, we still have our library and our senior center that are our next focus before we take on, at least in my opinion, to take on any other financial responsibility for us, so it would have to be a fundraising effort.
I was just thinking down the line, if you thought it's something that we would have to cover or something, I mean, we don't plan on putting it in unless we have the funds to put it in completely.
How would our insurance work?
Yeah, that would be my only concern, when you say that the upkeep would be run by Mespa and that the endowment would be managed by Mespa, because with our insurance, if our insurance company were to come out and do an inspection and advise us that we need to repair something, the town more or less needs control over whether or not that gets done, and I'm sure there are great people on Mespa, and right now they would fix it just like that, but that doesn't mean that will always be the case, and to Jen's point, parents come and go. So I think the town would need some type of control or access to that funding if repairs were gonna be required.
Okay, so, are we, how will we go about doing that for the town?
My suggestion would be, we would open, whether it's a donation account or specifically a playground capital line item, where your maintenance fundraising would be put in, would be deposited.
Okay.
It would be a line item.
Something else that's probably unseen, that once you get into ledge, it's like, did you get quotes to have the ledge removed?
We did have one, just one, I believe, Lenny had one person come.
Yeah, he actually had one person come who said that they would be able to level this area. I assume that the guy knew, he does this, I guess, for a living, I assume that he knows that there might be ledge, I assume that the, actually, maybe some of the...
There's a lot of ledge.
It's ledge, right.
That whole yacht is humped, probably because there's ledge.
He didn't feel that would be a problem for what we were gonna need.
Do you know how he proposed on doing that, was he gonna blast it, or?
I don't think he could blast that close to a building, I think he was thinking about taking a hammer probably to it.
Hammer drill.
Yeah, hammer drill.
He can't blast, he's too close to the building.
That's why, I know, that's why I asked the question.
He wouldn't get a permit to do it, he's too close to the building.
So I think that it would just be an excavator with a hammer attachment onto it.
End up making all sorts of cracks.
Even that, would rocks fly in?
Right, it would have to be done when the children are not there, are not present.
Summertime.
Exactly.
I'm thinking they're not thinking leveling to the ground, but leveling the area.
Yes.
So you're looking at just the, you know what I mean, almost like just the top surface of it.
Yeah, even discussed, like, because it slopes down a bit, that we'd have to build up a portion of it, just to level it out.
Yeah, but we don't want, we don't wanna build it up so much that the water's gonna flow back toward the school.
Right, that's true, right.
But what he was saying is that the way that he would level it, he would level the area, and then he would take like the last five, have a five-inch slope coming at the edge to, I guess, whisk away the water?
What, toward the sidewalk where the handicap signs are?
Toward the sidewalk, yes. That was my impression.
We'll have to see what he proposes.
Because I just don't want you to get into a project, dig the whole yacht up, and then get delayed because a lot of ledge has to be removed.
I think you have some, my understanding is you have some time between the leveling and the actual building because of your fundraising efforts.
Exactly, yeah, we're looking to do it, you know, phases is how we're putting it as we get the funds, so we're initially hoping to get the funds to get this done first, the leveling and clearing of the area, then the next step is the funding for the poured surface, so we'll have to do it in phases as the money's raised.
I don't foresee it to be a problem to get a concrete proposal from the person about what he's going to be doing, to be able to bring that back down to you guys, to the, you know, for the selectmen for you guys to evaluate that. Because it seems like that's what you would like to have done.
That's our concern.
Another thing is just with rain, right now, everything kinda goes into the dirt and filters through, so now with the poured surface, we're gonna be making sure that we have enough drainage up there.
Away from the school.
Away from the school, so that would be an issue, to make sure, you know, if it rains, that the water's running down over as things melt, you know, it doesn't cause like a stream of ice across the front parking lot.
That's something, the playground...
I think the poured surface that we're looking at is somewhat coarse, I believe, and so it'll go sink down, I can double check, just come back and make sure, once we have definitely the poured, what we want for the poured surface, but I wanna say that the water will seep down, so you won't have that much drainage, because I wanna say that we have to build it up with some gravel, that the foundation for this poured surface has to have gravel underneath, and that gravel will help with any water bushes also.
Yeah, if we can just check on that too.
We've laid, that's part of our hope is to have you see us again, so we can come back with each phase and each, you know, new developments and information that we find out as we're going along with this site.
I'd like to do a site inspection to actually physically see this.
I think maybe if we give approval to stop forward the process, so that they can kinda get some prices, know that we're working with them, and kinda wait till we see the whole big picture for the final approval, if that's...
The reason why I'd like to do the site inspection is because our biggest concern is if someone comes in there and levels and just fills the whole spot with gravel, and next thing you know, it's a foot higher than what it is now, instead of taking down the rocks, covering over them, you got this big hump.
Would it make sense to get a proposal for the site preparation first, and then have you come to the site inspection?
Oh, you don't have a proposal yet?
Well, I guess we have, not a formal.
We did have someone...
Yeah, if you could...
I don't know whether or not we have a formal, not, another committee member handled that, but I, we'd like to get a formal one, come down, have that with us, that site view by you guys.
And maybe you could have whoever's gonna bid the job do like elevations from the sidewalk that's by the school?
Yeah.
We need to shoot some grates.
Yeah.
And there's no, like, from where this side, well, the doors, because we don't wanna hump there and anyone...
Yeah, you're right, no, no, no. Whose doors are you talking about that you want from?
The auditorium?
The auditorium doors?
Yes.
Okay.
Want it to look seamless, do you know what I mean? You know how people get septics put in their yard, and there's got a big retaining wall, and there's just the septics there because of the space and the, you know, the landscape? So I think our concern is making it look seamless.
Yeah, there's a reason why all that ledge and hump was there.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, when the building committee, because, I mean, they, they blasted up there for months. You know why that isn't leveled? I tend to think there might be a reason, so if you get a quote and it turns out that...
To be more than we're thinking, yeah.
Exactly.
So you don't know till you start going in and see what's actually under there?
Right, I just don't want it to be built up.
Where you know what's under there.
Or just how bad it is.
You have to do that.
And I believe, and someone, I could be wrong, and if I am wrong, someone will let you know on the school committee, but I believe final say of what goes up there is at the town's discretion, yes?
That's right.
It's my understanding, it is our land, it is our building, it is our, they can give you their input and their thought process on it, but in the end, it comes back to this.
That's why we came here first, right? Yep.
And if I'm wrong, someone up there will tell you. I don't have a problem making just that they have our support, a motion that they have our support, and pending all finalized plans.
They can move forward.
They can move forward with their efforts, and we'll just keep that door open, keep it, communication, how things go, in-site visits, maybe check-ins, just to make sure, and then I'm sure you'll get to a point where we'll be, we'll be satisfied, because there's two members not here tonight, so.
I might suggest too, before you come back, meeting with the chief of police and fire as well, just to get their input.
Get their input, get his input, their input.
So come with that information, and come with the proposal from the person who's going to prepare this for us.
I'll second that motion.
Can we move forward? Any discussion? All those have paid off?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Just contact me again when you're ready to... Just contact me again when you're ready to. And I think one of the things also is when we kind of get to the end, they'll be looking at possibly, because they're a nonprofit, a waiver fees to install and to build and to do things later in the process, so. Make sure, let them know.
Do you need these back?
No, you, you may keep them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
I'll lose that, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, first public forum.
Anything you want. That, this is the time.
Valerie Haggard, I have concern regarding the telephone wires located up on Lake Street.
On what?
Lake, I'll, G G.
Yeah, I know, I know quite well.
I've been dealing with this for numerous years, that with high winds or with the rains, we have very old wiring up there. A limb will fall, hit against one of the outside wires along the road. My phone, it sounds like you have to scream and yell in order to talk to somebody. Takes a couple of days, sometimes it takes a day, two days, sometimes three days, for the telephone to come out and fix it. Sometimes it's better response, sometimes it's not, sometimes it fixes itself, just by the limb moving or the water drying out. Um, so my concern would be is that hopefully if they come, or I don't know if we can contact them, to have them replace the wires out there at some point. It's not the wires coming from their pole to my house, cause that was fine. It's these wires going down the roads.
I don't know if we got.
It's a telephone.
Yeah, we have no jury.
National Grid owns the poles.
Okay.
But Verizon, I assume it's Verizon, not Charde Telephone.
Yep.
Verizon does own their own wires. Um, I can make a few phone calls and see what we can do up there.
Now, where on Grove Street, what number?
Uh, Lake, on forty-six B.
Forty-six B?
Yeah, on the house right around at the corner where it turns.
And these poles are right in front of your home or?
Actually, from what we can understand is that sometimes it's the lines going down the road in Lake Street. Sometimes it's the going down around the curve, going down on Grove.
You have the house with the house?
Yes.
A and B? Okay, what are you, in the back?
Yeah.
John's neighbor.
You're my neighbor.
Okay, through the woods?
I'm on Grove.
You're on Grove.
Right around the corner.
Okay.
Now, that's always been an issue.
Yes, I've lived there since ninety-nine and it's, it seems like in last year or so, it seems to be like it's got worse.
They replaced a couple of poles on that street, one right in front of your place, and they just replaced the one, because I just had that one replaced, cause it fell down.
Yeah, there was two that were replaced, yeah.
The problem is, is these guys, they come in and replace the pole, they do their job, and it, what they do is they cut telephone poles short.
Yeah.
And they staple it to the other pole and it's all the telephone stuff and everything is sitting on the side of the brand new pole. They never transferred it, so it's swinging all over the place.
Don't they have a timeframe where they're supposed to transfer it over? Is it still on the old pole, not been attached to the new?
Yeah, whenever they want.
It's still on the old pole. They cut a piece like two, three feet, Jennifer, they just put it right up.
I thought within the utilities, there was a, I thought there was a timeframe.
Now we got two of them like that and one's right in front of a house.
I don't know why I think that.
And then it seems like, you know, with that swaying and everything, just the whole line down the road.
It's not supported, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll definitely make a phone call on that.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get medical care at some point.
If you come down here more often, things happen, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, correspondence, it's on. Amendments and resignations. We have one resignation.
Uh, resignation from one person, but from two committees.
Oh, two committees, yep, right. I wish to tend to my resignation for the council on aging as of this date. I als, I wish also to resign from Centennial Committee. I appreciate the time that I was able to give to both of these committees and the work that I was able to accomplish. P S, have had.
I wouldn't read that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's kind of like.
That's just, that's just business.
I will continue to volunteer at the center as this is my wish. I'll include my office and building key in my resignation letter. Thank you, Paulette Merkew.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation.
Second.
Any, uh, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your service.
Can we get a letter out to her for her time and efforts?
Helen, thank you very much for your commitment, your dedication.
So, uh, Mrs. Merkew's resignation leaves now one vacancy on the Council on Aging. You do have a letter in front of you submitted by the first alternate on the council, that's Patricia Leja. She is interested in being appointed, um, as a permanent member.
Okay, so I don't need to read through this?
Nope, Mrs. Merkew's, um, term was to expire June thirtieth of two thousand fifteen. So if it's the board's wish, you could certainly appoint Mrs. Leja to fill the unexpired term through that same date.
Make a motion to appoint Patricia Leja to the Council on Aging through June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Here and now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Helen, can we put something out that we'll be looking for an alternate?
Sure.
Um, the only thing I have to report this evening, uh, as most of you know, um, last weekend, the snowplow was stolen from the salt shed um, along with some other miscellaneous tools and equipment, um, so we, um, are filing a claim for that. Unfortunately, we, we now have to really look into putting a camera over there, really watching all of our highway equipment and unfortunately.
Who's recommending the camera?
The police department.
Is he?
Now, what if we, we were to move the, the valuable things out of that area and bring them?
That's what I'm wondering.
I don't understand. The fire station or the town hall?
Park here at the town hall.
I don't understand why you put it there in the first place, if you're honest with me, because that thing sits out, out there like a, like a circus, like, come and get me. I mean, there's, like you said, there's no protection, Helen, there's no camera, no nothing. If you put it over here, we will, probably wouldn't have had that problem.
Cameras, I don't think a camera, all the thing the camera's gonna do is show someone in a mask now, taking it. It's not gonna, you know what I'm saying? It's, it's not, it's not a live feed, is it, that someone's looking at?
No.
So it's just a tape that you can go back later as a surveillance. I personally rather, I mean.
Well, it's not up to us to tell him where to put it.
Right. I really, I mean, the, I will only say that I've been told for years, before this present highways there, that one of the reasons why the previous one kept the trucks at their house was for safety and, and value. Not to have anything happen. And I understand not everyone can park things at their own home. Um, but we do have space within town that those things can be secured and safe and at least watched more frequently than at the salt shed.
A fire chief said there was plenty of room behind the fire station for, I don't know if that's a little safe, there's more people there.
Where it is right now, I mean, that's, there's no, but there's nothing. I mean, you said, Charlie, at least you have some movement over here. Maybe Brian wouldn't have a problem putting the plow right at his house only, you know what I mean, just.
I don't, well, I don't think that's an option.
That's really not up to us to decide anyways.
It's his decision, but.
Helen was just.
He needs to find a different, he needs to find a different location.
So we have a deductible with that?
We will have a one thousand dollar deductible and we will file that claim.
Did they estimate on how much was?
Um, it was, I think, seven thousand and change to replace it and another, uh, five hundred dollars, I think miscellaneous equipment.
Is that something, um, this board might want to ask Mr. Malali to talk about? I mean, the landfill is the town property. Um, if we wish for our town property not to be stored on that town land, then that might be a discussion we need to have with Mr. Malali. You know, I mean, granted, it's his department, he can put his truck where he wants, but we can also say, we can't keep filing these claims if something happens on land that's not fully secured.
No, I think Brian would be reasonable about it.
Yeah.
Do we want to have a discussion with him or do we want?
Just tell Brian we'd like to have, like Jennifer said, a discussion with him, if he could come and meet us or whatever.
Ask him if he can come into our next meeting.
You know what, maybe ask him, tell him the board's wishes. If he doesn't, if he does not agree with us, then maybe we need to have a discussion.
Okay.
If he, if he agrees with us, then, you know, then let's look at somewhere else. It might not even be an issue, so rather calling someone in, just see if they, if they're willing to work with our thoughts, our wishes. And if not, then we can.
And that is just specifically not to park, park it in the landfill, but not necessarily that he has to park it in the town hall parking lot, just not to park it there.
Prefer to be parked in a location that's more visible.
Right, we need something with a little bit more, uh, action around it, you know, it's not so dormant, nobody's on, not there.
Okay, that, was that it for old business?
Uh, yep, that was my report. I don't have any old business.
Helen, there was one other thing, there was one other thing, Helen, you had this for the, uh, ethics?
Thank you.
So that's the end of it, right?
For two years, anyway.
Actually, you know what, if, if the board would allow, under my report, what I will ask you to do is, um, because I didn't include this under new business, is to call for the special and annual town meeting, which per town bylaw is the second Monday in May, which would be Monday, May thirteenth. And I gave you all a copy of the warrant schedule. And the anticipated closure of the warrant would be Monday, March eighteenth. Uh, so your vote would be to go ahead and call the special and annual town meetings from Monday, May thirteenth, six thirty and seven P M respectively, and to open those warrants effective immediately with an anticipated closure of March eighteenth.
So we need to do that now?
Mm-hmm.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to call for a town meeting and, um, annual town meeting and special town meeting to open the warrant for article items to be submitted, um, effective today with an anticipation closing of March eighteenth, two thousand thirteen.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
All those in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
And then just that, that one letter that I handed you earlier under correspondence, um, we received it a little late. Um, just do either of you anticipate being able to attend on Thursday from four to eight from the, uh, school committee? Would you like me to contact Mr. Shaverhood at all?
Are they collaborative educator negotiations? And this is for?
I, I'm not, I, I don't know.
We don't negotiate the teacher's contract. Is it related to that? Is it something different? You know, kind of knew what the trading was about.
I can find out what you can.
Why don't you do that? Cause it's kind of like.
I mean.
Well, I won't be able to, cause I'll be out of town.
Okay.
At that time.
I may not be able to attend a portion of it, just time wise, um, but if it's for something I'm not gonna utilize, if it's not related to. I mean, if, cause they negotiate their teachers' contracts, that's what I'm assuming it is, if it's something different, then.
Well, I know the teachers, the general teachers bargaining contracts, um, the towns of Blackstone and Millville have to choose one representative representing the towns, and that, since I've been here, has always been the town administrator in Blackstone. It's never been a member of this board or myself, so I don't know if this is the same thing or if this is something different. But I will find out, I want you to know.
So we could send you?
No, it says board of selectmen on here, so it's very clear, one member of the board of selectmen. Good times.
So we have one member for the two towns that can sit in?
Yes, the two, the towns have to agree on one representative.
Wow. That's something.
And during the last negotiations, um, Mrs. Wayne, before you were on the board, um, none of the board of selectmen in Millville or myself could attend the meeting dates. Um, and it was before Blackstone had hired their current administrator, so there was no representation at all. Nobody sat in.
Yeah, that's what it, I'm just kind of, they're training. That's what it looks like it is. It looks like a, a teacher.
Okay, new business. Looks like we overspent on our snow and ice.
We have already overspent and that does not include, um, this past week. So the board, per Master General Law, would need to make a motion to overspend the snow and ice budget. And the same type of motion also needs to be made by the finance committee and they have been informed of that.
The finance committee can't do it because they have no quorum.
I believe they're meeting tomorrow night.
What's that?
They're meeting tomorrow night to make their motion.
So I make a motion to authorize the snow and ice emergency expenditures, um, just read it as is, expenditures in excess of appropriation as provided by Master General Law, chapter forty-four, section thirty-one D.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the next, yeah, the next item you have is from Southern New England Trunk Line Trail. And what they are asking is for the board's support, um, in a multi-community joint planning resolution. They're looking to get some funding, um, through the, the Blackstone River Valley National Heritage Corridor. Um, the towns of Douglas, Uxbridge, Millville, Blackstone, Bellingham and Franklin to link commercial and transportation centers. So they're just looking for the board's endorsement at this time. And if the board chooses to, you would just need to vote to authorize the vice chair to sign off on that, since it only requires one signature.
Second cost us anything, right?
Can't we ask them to do whatever they're doing in Millville first, because we'd never get first? If you think about the heritage corridor, it goes all the way up and then it stops right in the middle.
And it's the second to last town, right to the state line?
Yep.
Do I get a motion for that?
I make a motion for a Southern New England Trunk Line Trail Community Joint Planning Resolution, as read.
As read. Second.
And also have the, uh, vice chair sign for.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, one day liquor license, Saint Augustine's.
Yep, um, and this event is for February ninth, two thousand thirteen, from five thirty P M to ten thirty P M. Um, this will be for wine and malt beverages only. And the police department has recommended approval. There is no police presence required. Uh, and this is for an appreciation dinner. And we do have up to date insurance certifications.
Is there a deposit or anything?
They have paid the twenty, it's twenty-five dollar check for a wine and malt, thirty, for all alcohol.
All right, I make a motion that we accept, uh, the, uh, Saint Augustine's Church, uh, appreciation dinner, February ninth, two thousand thirteen, between five thirty and ten thirty, for their beer and wine.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're just having lots of parties up there lately. This is like the third one.
It's good.
Guess that's it, Charlie.
What is this engineering water?
Um, that was, yeah, that was in your correspondence, that's for your review. That is, um, the engineering firm that D E P is strongly recommending. We have to do an evaluation of the existing system, that is his report.